Yes, Mr. Colville. I can tell you that we have read the judge's judgment, we've read the skeleton arguments, we've read the terms of the grant of permission to appeal. So we're up to speed, but what puzzles me is why it's important, given that there's a deeming provision. My lord, do you want me to deal that straight away? Please, I will. My lords, I do not seek to argue this appeal by reference to the consequences of this case where the tax...
Sorry?
I'm so sorry.
You don't seek to argue the appeal? I missed it.
I don't seek to argue the appeal by reference to the consequences, but it's right that the court does understand that there are consequences and this is an important case for this reason. Mainly because if Uber are right and Parliament does not legislate on the topic, then provincial and rural operators will have to charge VAT on the price of the rides, some of all, some or all of which will be passed to passengers. This frequently includes children, elderly and disabled people, care and health workers, late-night workers, and so forth. It's important for HMRC, which is already consulting the industry and the wider public on what might happen or have to happen if this appeal fails. It's important for the 350 licensing authorities in England and Wales who'd have to prepare themselves to regulate not just vehicles drivers and operators, but also contracts, which none of them currently do as far as we're aware. It would be important for drivers working under this agency model who for half a century have hired their communication equipment from operators but keep the fares paid by riders. If Uber are right, they would at very least have to record and account to their operators for VAT charged while potentially experiencing a reduction in the market arising from the increase in fares. And of course, it's important for operators who'd have to account to HMRC for VAT, they'd have to rearrange their software and accounting systems together with the contracts with drivers and customers. The evidence in this case, which you'll find at court-
And you say none of that would happen if it's simply a question of a deemed contract?
Correct. And that's something we've... Obviously, you're not waiving privilege, but we've specifically taken tax advice about... It's about the provider of the service. Under the deeming arrangement, none of that happens. There are 15,000 or so provincial operators and the evidence is that the majority of them operate under the agency model and so are directly affected by this case. For my client, it's been doing this for 48 years with the knowledge of HMRC and also without demur from its six licensing authorities. In its biggest year, it did this 12 million times. That was 2017, and obviously it wants to go on doing it. Uber may say, well, this change has already happened in London, which is of course a different market with a single regulator. Some operators already charge VAT according to HMRC and there may be mitigation measures which could be used or which HMRC could employ through legislation. But that's really an argument about the degree of structural change. The fact remains that this is one of the more consequential cases on private transportation which has come before the courts and that is why we're here. All right. The question in this appeal is as follows. Is a private hire operator who accepts a booking from a passenger lawfully required to contract as principal to provide the journey the subject of the booking? And I submit that the answer is no for three main reasons, which I will summarise briefly and then develop in my submissions. Firstly, the Act contains a number of express requirements on operators, but it's common ground that there's no express requirement in the Act to contract as principal. Contracting is not a licensable activity. There's no offence of failing to contract as principal or acting as booking agent for the driver. There's no statutory condition which says you must contract as principal. There's no provision which says contracting as principal is a criterion for grant of a licence or that failure is a criterion for revocation. Two, rather, the Act expressly deals with contracting by deeming that in every case the contract for hire is with the operator. And by these means, Parliament deftly gave contractual recourse against the operator without needing to interfere in the various contractual arrangements which occur and have always occurred in practice. And three, given that there's no express requirement on operators to contract as principal, the question arises of how this alleged but tacit requirement is to be enforced. Uber say it's to be enforced by licensing authorities who must be directed by this court to refuse and even revoke licences where operators fail to contract as principal. Again, the Act contains a number of express obligations on licensing authorities, mandatory shall is frequently used. None of them says you shall refuse or revoke a licence where the operator fails to contract as principal. And unsurprisingly therefore, for the last 48 years, at least as far as we're aware, no authority has ever done so. And so Uber's case amounts to an assertion of an unexpressed obligation on operators to be enforced by an unexpressed obligation on licensing authorities declared or directed by this court. We do not accept that Parliament should be taken to have sent even one coded signal, let alone two. It either legislated for such obligations or it didn't, and here it didn't. The obligations under the 76 Act involve getting and complying with licences, not entering into specific forms of contract. Put shortly, the Act says if you do X, Y, Z, you need a licence. It doesn't say if you have a licence, you must enter into X, Y, Z contract. It didn't need to because it deemed that contractual responsibility lay with the operator in any event. So that's what I would assume applies.
The scheme of the Act assumes there is a contract between somebody and somebody. Otherwise, the passenger's not liable to pay the fare. So there's got to be a contract somewhere.
There has got to be a contract somewhere. There's no question at all.
And you say it doesn't really matter where in the real world the contract is. The deeming provision places a liability on the operator, even if the contract is between the passenger and the driver.
Case is for all circumstances. So the operator who gets a call, your driver didn't turn up, the operator can't say, oh, nothing to do with me. There's a deemed responsibility. And that, in essence, is the case.
Right. That's a very straightforward point.
Well, it is rather, we say. And I mean, I'm very much in the court's hands. And I did want to take the court through the architecture of the Act-
Yeah, I do.
... and see how safety plays through. But please, I'm not here for as a monologue or a lecture. If you feel that you need to go quicker, you don't need to know something, you've already got it, please, please intervene.
The liberty that I've got at the moment is assuming the declaration shouldn't have been granted and assuming we discharge it. You've still got the judgment, which says in paragraph 65, implicit in the structure of the regulator requirements in part two is the assumption that where a person makes a booking with the operator, the person with the section 55 licence, that contract is between the person who makes the booking and the section 55 operator. So even if we discharge the licence, I don't see how your problems will be solved until you get rid of section, paragraph 65 of the judgment.
Well, we do need... I mean, if you want me to, we're very happy to go through the judgment. We say that's simply wrong, that by the time the person-
No, I understand you say it's wrong, but you haven't got permission to appeal it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I mean, I think probably when I get to the declaration, I'll take you through what actually happened. What did happen is that Lord Justice Phillips in paragraph one of the permission decision, and I'll take you to it in due course, I'd rather argue the substance of the matter, said there's obviously a contract because it's deemed. And then in paragraph two, he said, well, because it's deemed, there's an argument about whether it's required. That gave rise to some quite extensive correspondence, particularly two letters from WISU, where they said, look, we must be entitled to argue whether in fact a contract is required under this legislation. And Lord Justice Phillips sent a message down, yes, that's what I meant. And I'm very happy to take you through that correspondence. But perhaps it's best I leave that to-
But you haven't got permission on ground one, have you?
I beg pardon?
You haven't got permission on ground one.
We... It's a question of interpretation of how it works. The way Lord Justice Phillips dealt with it was to say, you can't argue there's not a contract because there's a deemed contract. And that's essentially the structure of the permission process. And he certainly left it open to us to argue that a contract was not required. That was certainly the outcome of the correspondence. But I'll take you to that correspondence in due course. My lords, my lady, the order of my submissions will be as follows. The answer to the principal question in this appeal turns on the construction of the LGMPA, taking the relevant provisions in the context of the legislation as a whole. It's a legal point. I'm therefore going to spend a little time taking the court through the legislation, demonstrating to you how it provides for the safety of passengers and how it deals with contracting. And I hope, very briefly, to convey a somewhat more rounded understanding of the architecture of the legislation and what Parliament was seeking to achieve than perhaps previously occurred. I'm then going to deal shortly with the Maxwell Stamp Report. I'm then going to touch on the London legislation, which is different legislation for a different region, coming 22 years after the Act we're concerned with, and also look at the case law on that legislation. Looking ahead, I shall show you in particular that the London legislation differs in that it contains no deeming provision. And I'll show you where that distinction lies. And finally, I'm going to say a word about the wording of the declaration sought by Uber now, which is a different declaration to that which is sought and which was made below, not least because by necessity it no longer seeks a declaration that contracting as principal is lawfully required. That word has gone from the declaration it now seeks, just required, which begs the question, required by which words in the legislation? Am I going to end with that? So that's the structure of what's-
Right. And I assume between you, you have divided up the time so that we finish today.
I am hoping that we're going to do that. And I spoke to Mr. Goury about-
There's no question. A question of hoping.
Then it's going to be. That is what it's going to be. Myself and Mr. Goury this morning, spoke with Bose as well, Uber this afternoon. That's the general structure. And I will keep my eye on the clock.
Well, I've been quietly reflecting, but there may be nothing for me to say when the time comes.
We shall see. No, Mr. Goury, very long time. I'm sorry, Mr. Bose.
I suspect there will be for me.
Yes, I'm sure there will. So I'm going to start with the question of construction.
Yeah.
With your permission, please can I remind the court of the relevant principles? I know the court will be very familiar with them. Set out of the case of O, which is TAB 19, page 379 of the Authorities bundle. At page 389, you will see the leading speech given by Lord Hodge.
Yeah, I think you can take it that whatever you know is unfamiliar-
TAB 19, page 379. And 389, you see speech of Lord Hodge. And can I take you straight, please, to page 395?
Yeah.
And with an eye on the clock, I am going to paraphrase. Paragraph 29. The courts are seeking the meaning of the words which Parliament used. The court is to identify the meaning borne by the words in question. Further down the paragraph, other provisions in a statute may provide the relevant context. They are the words which Parliament has chosen to enact as an expression of the purpose of the legislation and are therefore the primary source. And citizens, with the assistance of their advisers, are intended to be able to understand enactment so they can regulate their conduct accordingly. They should be able to rely on what they read and enact. External aids therefore must play a secondary role. Various external aids are identified. Context of those materials is relevant to ascertain the meaning of the statute, whether or not there's ambiguity and uncertainty. But none of these external aids displaces the meanings conveyed by the words of the statute that after consideration of the context are clear and unambiguous. And then paragraph 31, reference to Speth Homes. The task of the court is often said to be to ascertain the intention of Parliament expressed in the language. That's correct as long as it's remembered, and this is an objective concept, not subjective. The phrase is a shorthand reference to the intention which the court reasonably imputes to Parliament in respect of the language used. So that's the rule and the words of the statute are therefore of the essence. In this case therefore, the question arises, can one find words in the statute amounting to an obligation on operators to contract as principal and a correlative obligation on licensing authorities to refuse and revoke licences to those who don't? And my submission is you can't. Can we look at the factual context very briefly? Since 1847, Hackney carriage drivers and vehicles required licences in the provinces, different provisions in London. Hackney carriage is defined by what they do, which is to apply for hire, which is to say to display themselves for immediate hire. And by immediate hire, I mean customers step in and they contract directly with the driver. And the ability therefore of a passenger to contract directly with a driver has been established for nearly two centuries. The passenger stepping into a Hackney carriage knows they're in safe hands because they can look at his badge, they can see the driver is licensed, they can look at the plate on the cab, they can see the cab is plated. Now, only licensed Hackney carriages comply for hire, sit on ranks and be hailed in the street. Prior to 1976, cars which did none of those things, which were booked, required no licence at all. And therefore, there was no licensing control at all over the people taking the bookings, the fitness of the drivers they dispatched, or the safety or comfort of the vehicles used to carry passengers. There was no licensing control. So in 76, Parliament legislated to bring the whole private hire industry under licensing control outside London. The Act was adoptive, section 45, but all authorities in England, Wales, outside London adopted it, save for Plymouth, which utilised local legislation. Now, as we look at the legislation, I'm going to ask the court to note, like in all licensing legislation, doesn't matter what you look at, there are three mechanisms for enforcement of control. One, the Act defines the licensable activity which will henceforth require a licence, and that activity is made criminal if carried out without a licence. Can I just give you a simple parallel? A licence is needed to sell alcohol. It's criminal to sell it without a licence. Two, it sets out requirements and prohibitions on licences when the uniform rules are considered to be necessary. Example, can't sell alcohol to under 18s. Three, it enables the regulator, sometimes national, sometimes local, to impose conditions in its discretion in individual cases, e.g., must have a door supervisor outside your nightclub. We will see all of these mechanisms at work in this Act. Please may we therefore now turn to the Act, which is in the Authorities bundle, TAB 3, page 54, which is the beginning of the Act. And I'm going to ask the court to turn to page 102. Section 46 is the foundation stone of this legislation. It rests on three elements: vehicle, driver and operator. I'll take you through the material parts. Except as authorised by this part of the Act. A, no person being a proprietor of any vehicle, this is the vehicle provision, not being a Hackney carriage, in respect of which a vehicle licence is enforced, will permit the same to be used in a control district, in other words, the local authority area, as a private hire vehicle without a licence for that vehicle. So that's the vehicle part. I'll return to the Hackney carriage exclusion a bit. B, the driver part, no person shall drive that vehicle without having a current licence. D, the operator part, no person shall operate a vehicle as a PHV, for short, private hire vehicle, without a current licence. And E creates what is called the triple lock. No person shall operate any vehicle as a private hire vehicle if there isn't a licence and if the driver doesn't have a licence. That means that all three licences have to be issued by the same authority, according to the case of Ditter, which is at TAB 10.
But if you are accepting bookings as agent for the driver, are you operating a vehicle at all?
Yeah, and there's lots of authorities on this. I'm not sure we've put them all in the bundle. The authorities are very clear that operation, which is defined in section 81, 80 subsection one, as making provision for the invitation or acceptance of a booking-
That's Mr. Justice Dyson's judgment amongst others.
Amongst others, as in Bronfrover Parrot. So it's all about that antecedent office work of making provision for invitation. So there's no get-out for operators, they're, oh, no, no, I'm sending someone else off and it's all down to them. If you're making provision, you're an operator. Criminal offences in subsection two-
But are your clients the operator anyway? Because they are making the provision for the bookings, the invitation or acceptance of bookings.
What defines them?
No, is your client an operator?
Oh, absolutely. No question at all. No question at all. Subsection two is the offence. This is my category one obligation, it's the licensable activity. You carried on without a licence, you're guilty of an offence. So on to the provisions which deal with licensing. Firstly, vehicle, section 48. 48.1a, subject to the bridge of this part of the Act, a district council may, this is one of the discretionary ones, on receipt of the application for a vehicle licence granted, proviso, shan't grant it unless they're satisfied. And here's what the Act is about in respect of vehicles. The vehicle's got to be suitable in type, design and size. It's got to not look like a Hackney carriage, it's got to be suitable mechanically, it's got to be safe and comfortable, and it's got to have a policy of insurance. Now, we ought to just look at what the definition of a private hire vehicle is, which you'll find in section 80 subsection one, which is at page 138. Two-thirds way down the page, PHV means a motor vehicle constructed or adapted to seat fewer than nine passengers other than a Hackney carriage or a public service vehicle which is provided for hire with the services of the driver for the purposes of carrying passengers. And you'll see the correlative of that in section 46.1a, which includes Hackney carriages. The effect of that, as it happens, is that licensed Hackney carriage drivers can do private hire work, whether directly or through operators, contracting direct with customers. They're excluded from the private hire regime. And there's even case law which shows they can be dispatched by private hire operators and they can contract direct with the customer. We'll look at that briefly later. Now, back to section 48. Subsection two, the district council can attach conditions, and frequently they do. What sort of conditions? I don't want to drag you through individual factual cases, but it's worth noting for your note, and this is one of the parts I'm going to speed up and you can tell me if you want me to slow down. There was a recent Act, the Policing and Crime Act 2017. Section 177 provided for publication of statutory standards to protect children and vulnerable people. I'm not taking you to it, but it's at TAB 8. And for your note, the standards are at page 766. Section seven of the standards speaks of DBS, Disclosure and Borrowing Service, checks for proprietors and in-car CCTV. In addition to that, in November of 2023, the government published Best Practice Guidance, which you'll find at 818. And page 865, section eight, deals with vehicles, covers vehicle testing, vehicle safety ratings, environmental considerations, accessibility, inclusivity, identification, signage, partitions in the vehicle, CCTV, emergency equipment and so on and so forth. So there's quite a detailed scheme has arisen as a result of that ability to add conditions. Section 48.5 of the Act provides for the issue of a plate to the vehicle. Section 48.6 says it has to be displayed so that every rider getting into a PHV can see it's a licensed PHV, they can see who's licensed it, therefore who they can complain to, and that it's met the standards required by that licensing authority. And section 50 subsection one provides for presentation of vehicles for testing. Section 54 provides for presentation of the licence and insurance. And section 68 provides for on-the-spot inspection and testing by police officers and local authorities. So the safety of vehicles is a key element of the control which is important by this Act, and it receives thorough treatment in the legislation. Important thing is you're getting into a car, you need to know it's safe. Next, drivers. Drivers are dealt with in section 51. And you'll see immediately that this is a shall, this is a mandatory. District council shall, on receipt of an application to grant the licence, grant the licence, provided that. They shall not grant a licence unless satisfied the applicant is fit and proper. And then there's an immigration test as well. And at 1B, they've got to be licensed to drive a car for at least 12 months. And at subsection two, they can add conditions. Now, what does fit and proper actually mean? And here, we're in the safe hands of Lord Bingham in a case called McCool, TAB 12, who dealt with exactly that, a 267F. And he said, you've got to approach this bearing in mind the objectives of the regime, which is intended to ensure so far as possible that those licensed to drive PHVs are suitable, namely safe drivers with good driving records and adequate experience, sober, mentally and physically fit, honest, and not persons who take advantage of their employment to abuse or assault passengers, as is often put by commentators on this Act, but also by the government and the statutory standards. Would you allow somebody you know who's vulnerable to get into this car with this person, into that space? So that's about, that's what fit and proper is all about. The statutory standards, I'm not going to take you to. Section six, page 792, criminality checks, safeguarding awareness, language proficiency, best practice guidance, section six, 852, disability awareness, driver proficiency, medical and vision assessments, language proficiency and so on. The Act, at section 57.2, enables the authority to demand a medical certificate or for the applicant to attend an examination. Section 54 deals with badging, the driver's got to wear the badge, and again, so the passenger can immediately see that they've been carried by a licensed driver. So again, an extensive scheme of control over drivers to ensure the driver driving you is fit and proper to do so. So that's leg two of the regime. And so if you just think about where we've got to so far, a licensed driver, licensed car, that mirrors the Hackney carriage regime. There are some differences of application in practice. For example, PHV drivers don't tend to be required to take topographical tests, aka the knowledge, because it's essentially pre-booking. And some authorities have got higher standards for Hackneys, such as wheelchair accessibility, that sort of thing. But in most respects, the standards are the same. And many drivers are in fact dual-licensed in this country, meaning that they can work under either regime. And there are provisions I'll take you to, I won't take you, I'll tell you. Section 69, which is illegal prolongation of journeys, applies both to private hire and Hackneys. So that's the second leg, is drivers. Finally, operators, section 55. Finally, operators, section 55. Subject to the bridge of this part of the Act, a district council shall solicit another mandatory, on receipt of an application, grant, provided they shan't grant unless they're satisfied the applicant is fit and proper to hold that licence. And provisions about immigration status. Now, what is it to operate? That's received quite a lot of attention over the years, but a settled legal position. You'll find the definition of operate, meaning in the course of business, this is section 80 subsection 1, to make provision for the invitation or acceptance of bookings for a private hire vehicle. And we've just looked at the definition of private hire vehicle. It's the vehicle, other than the Hackney carriage, provided for hire with the services of the driver for the purposes of carrying passengers. I ought to have mentioned that Uber placed some stress on those final words. We're not quite sure why, because if the vehicle were provided for hire without the service of a driver, it would be a hire car. It wouldn't be covered by this legislation at all. It's just really setting out what the Act does. So that is the meaning of operate. That has been interpreted in three cases which are before the court. It may just be helpful to take you to one, which is Milton Keynes and Skyline, which is in tab 16 of the bundle. Page 305. And the material passage is at 308, judgment of Lord Justice Hickenbottom. And this was the operator who passed a booking to itself in a different district. And paragraph 8, Lord Justice Hickenbottom said, 'Operators be considered in many cases, including the one just mentioned by my lord. These firmly establish that operate doesn't have its common meaning. Rather, it's a term defined strictly by section 81, the course of business to make provision for invitation and acceptance, and therefore, as Justice Dyson's then was said in the Powers case, it focuses on the arrangements pursuant to which the private hire vehicle is provided, not the provision of the vehicle itself. It's not to be taken as including or providing of the vehicle, but refers to the antecedent arrangements.' I won't take you to it, but in Brentwood and Leyden, tab 15, page 301, paragraph 23, it was put to Mr Justice Collins that it included make use of a vehicle. Mr Justice Collins said, 'No, that wasn't it at all. It's the antecedent arrangements.' In other words, the licensable activity, the activity which requires a licence, concerns the antecedent arrangements concerning the booking. It's not actually providing the vehicle. And the reason for that is simple. Customer is getting a duly licensed driver driving a duly licensed car, otherwise the operator commits an offence. Exactly the same as when they get into a Hackney carriage, they've got the licensed driver and car. But the added dimension in the case of private hire bookings is you've now got an operator, what in Victorian times used to be called the jobmaster. When they're taking that booking, they're learning things about the customer, where they live, where they work, that they're disabled, they're young, they're female, they live in a care home, they're travelling alone, they're vulnerable, they're going to the airport and so forth. So all of that, that fitness of the operator is controlled by the private hire regime. So back to the section. Section 55.1 demands that they are fit and proper. Fit and proper to do what? Answer, to hold an operator's licence? What does that permit someone to do? To make the antecedent arrangements?
Sorry, I understand what you say about the operator is to do with the arrangements for the provision of inviting and accepting bookings. I understand that.
Yes.
And you draw the distinction between that and provision of the vehicle. I understand that as well.
Yes.
My question is a different question.
Well.
How does that relate to 46.1e? Because if you've got an operator's licence, then it seems when the vehicle is provided...
Yeah.
...it's got to have the relevant section 48 licence and the driver has got to have the relevant section 51 licence and ignore subcontracting for the moment.
Yes. I don't suggest that the Act is a thing of beauty, but the point that my lord has made has been made many, many times in the antecedent case law. And every single time, the Court has said, 46 has got to be read subject to 80, and 80 sets out what operation actually means. And I can take the case law, but I've mentioned the three cases.
But if I'm an operator, if I'm a person with a section 55 licence...
Yeah.
...and I make provision for the invitation and acceptance of bookings...
Yes.
...and the private hire vehicle is subsequently provided in the sense that a car turns up at the house and transports the person inside.
Yes.
And if the vehicle that turns up doesn't have the licence...
Yeah.
...and the driver that doesn't have the licence...
Yeah.
...there will be criminal liability, will there or will there not, on the part of the operator?
Absolutely.
There will be.
Under 46.1e.
Yeah.
And can I please, before you think that I'm trying to be cute with the Court, I really am not trying to suggest you the operator just bears no responsibility for the stable. And I'm going to come to show how an authority can deal with that if it wishes to deal with it. But if the operator chooses to hire a bunch of cavalier cowboys to do the operator's bidding and pick up the operator's licence, it's going to be a big problem.
Well, it's going to be a criminal offence, isn't it?
There's going to be a criminal offence, yeah.
And mainly to problems with the operator's licence, yeah.
And there's standard conditions which are routinely applied across England and Wales, which say the operator's got to have provisions for making complaints and for handling lost property and all of those sorts of things. And the operator doesn't do that, then that really does go to whether the operator should be in business at all. So I'm not trying to say the operator wash his hands, I'm just showing you the structure of the act.
No, but effectively, what you're saying is that 46.1e means that the drivers on the operator's books have to have their own licences.
Yes.
Drivers' licences and vehicle licences.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the licensing authority sits there in the town hall and can survey the whole, yeah, survey the whole scene. Can I, without, I don't think I need to take you, because it's not a contested proposition, but this question of what fitness and propriety might mean in the case of operators, you'll get some help from, again, Lord Bingham in the case of Warrington. I'll just give you the reference, which is tab 14, page 280, the case, 286, the paragraph, and I quote, 'It's doing whatever it is that the applicant seeks permission to do.' Support manta expression doesn't lend itself to semantic analysis or paraphrase, takes its stand in this context, this director to ensuring the applicant has the personal qualities and professional qualifications reasonably required of a person, doing whatever it is the applicant seeks permission to do. That's what the authority is testing. And if it considers the operator fit to do those things, to make provision of the invitation or acceptance of bookings and so forth, then there's a shall, there's a mandatory. Section 55.3, just proceeding on, provides for the attachment of conditions to licences. And it's standard through authorities to have standard conditions, sometimes set out in policies, schemes, handbooks and so forth, which should be attached as a matter of course, unless there's a particular debate in a particular case. Now, let's just proceed on to section 56. And I'm going to return to section 56.1 in a moment. But returning to what it is that the operator does, as it were, quay operator, once the licence is in force, they've got to keep a record. Sorry, I thought you said you were 56. 56.2, sorry, my lord. They've got to keep a record, and the council can specify what goes into the record before the commencement, they've got to enter into the record before the commencement of each journey, the tickers of every booking of a private hire vehicle invited or accepted by him, whether by accepting the same from the hire or by undertaking it at the request of another operator, I'll come back to that, as they shall prescribe. And then 56.3, they've got to keep records, essentially of their stable of cars. 57.2b allows the council to interrogate the applicant. What's their name? What's their address? What trade or business activities they carried on before? What other applications they made? Have they previously had a revocation or suspension? Have they got convictions? And in addition, they can look at the people who stand behind the company or partnership, the partners, directors, company secretaries and so forth. That's about the controlling minds. And then just for completeness, section 62 allows them to suspend or revoke if there's been offences or non-compliance with provisions, conduct rendering unfit, material changes, convictions or any other reasonable cause. And again, you can see how it plays out in the day-to-day licensing regime for operators. The statutory standards, page 800, section 8, criminality checks, good character of booking and dispatch staff, record keeping, noting that the information should enable the passenger to be traced if necessary, data protection, so obviously the operator holds data. The best practice guidance, page 86.1, a series of considerations, including disability awareness, insurance, breaches of health and safety or employment law. So again, extensive schemes grown up. And as I've just said, I'm not submitting that the operator can take the booking and then just wash his hands of the matter, not caring whether the driver who's been dispatched turns up or behaves him or herself. That operator who displays that degree of neglect or insouciance might find their collar felt by the licensing authority. Can I just show you Sefton's conditions attached to Delta's licence? Not because it's some sort of legal authority, but just it's a good example of the kind of things which councils can do, just to beef it up a little more. You'll find in supplementary bundle, tab 30. And at 3.14, you'll see condition 3a. When an operator accepts a hiring, they shall ensure that a Sefton-licensed private hire vehicle or Hackney carriage attends at the appointed place and as near to the appointed time as possible. So that's a very unremarkable condition, and if the operator breaches it, well, they breach their licence and they could find themselves under review. And we're not complaining about that responsibility at all. But what you'll note now, having been through the licensing provisions of this Act, is that nowhere in this scheme, this licensing scheme, or even indeed in the guidance or standards, is it stated, 'And the operator shall contract as principal', far less, the licensing authority shall refuse a licence or revoke a licence where the operator doesn't do so. And that's not surprising. A, because the focus in the Act is on the arrangements for booking, the trustworthiness of the staff, the keeping of records, the maintenance of insurance and so forth. And B, because as we've already identified, Parliament had an intelligent method of placing contractual responsibility on the operator without needing to interfere in contractual freedoms. So, as the Court has seen, this is a comprehensive and integrated regime predicated on safe drivers, safe and comfortable vehicles, safe operators, all subject to obligations appropriate to the licence activity, and all overseen by licensing authorities, have power to add conditions as they see fit. So thus far, the word contracting hasn't appeared at all. Now we need to turn to the few sections where contracting is mentioned in this Act. And as it was passed in 1976, there were three such sections, one particularly material here. One of them was subsequently repealed, no great moment, it was just repealed. And a further section was added in 2015, a deregulatory provision to enable operators to pass the booking to other operators in a different district, which would otherwise have been a breach of the triple lock, according to Ditter. So let's look at contract. Now, clearly, when a passenger is picked up and carried in a vehicle for consideration, there is a contract. It is inherent in the notion of hire. A contract is a bilateral arrangement. And before the Act was passed, no licensing regime, obviously there was complete freedom to contract on either side. It was a common law right, if you will, to enable people to contract as they wished. The question now arising is whether Parliament elected, by its language, and I use those words advisedly, to curtail that freedom, that right, by prescribing who must or must not contract on either side.
Just as a matter of interest...
Yes.
If your client arranges a booking...
Yes.
...and the driver turns up...
Yes.
...how is the contract made? Is it made by conduct, by the passenger getting into the vehicle? Is that how it works? It should normally speaking be an offer and an acceptance.
Yes.
So is the driver turning up an offer to carry the passenger, which is then accepted by the passenger getting into the car?
This could happen in all sorts of ways. But back to 76, the operator dispatches the driver to the Crown and Greyhound, meet the passenger, passenger says, 'I want to go to Mitcham', and the driver says, 'I think that's £15'. And there's your contract. That's how it, its most basic would happen.
But if it's done by telephone or going to the cab office, you telephone the minicab office, the private hire cab office, and you speak to the operator and you say to the operator on the end of the telephone, 'I want a cab to a public house from my house to that public house at a certain time', and the person on the telephone says, 'Yes', is there a contract at that stage?
Well, it's a strange contract, because it doesn't have the destination, it doesn't have the terms or it doesn't have the price.
If I say, 'I want to go from the Royal Courts of Justice to Buckingham Palace...'
Yes.
...at nine o'clock on Thursday morning...
Yes.
...and the operator says, 'Yes, that's fine'.
Yes.
Can I stand outside the Courts of Justice at nine o'clock on the Thursday morning confident that I have a contractual arrangement with the operator or with somebody to turn up at nine o'clock?
I'm going to give, my lord, not an impudent answer, but a true answer. It just depends on exactly what was said. It's perfectly feasible that the lord rings up a company and says, 'I want to get to the Royal Courts of Justice from my home on Monday morning', and the operator says, 'Okay, well, that's fine. That's going to be £20', and you say, 'That's fine'. There's no question that's a contract. Well, that's one possibility. The second possibility is the operator says, 'I'll dispatch a vehicle to pick you up. It's between you and the driver.' That's another possibility. The third is...
So who accepts the booking then, in that situation? Has the operator accepted the booking or has the booking not accepted until the driver says, 'Yes, you can get in my vehicle'?
Under my client's arrangements, my client's arrangement is called a best endeavours service, as described by Mr Justice Foster below. The operator says, 'We'll dispatch'. The driver might get there and find that the passenger's drunk or abusive. Just, I'm not, sorry, I'm not taking you. That is the model which is operated by my client.
So they might decide not to fulfil a booking, but say the telephone call is made...
Yes.
...'I want a cab at nine o'clock outside the Courts of Justice', and the operator says, 'Fine'.
Yes.
And the cab turns up and the person outside the cab is a judge and therefore by definition, sober.
Yes. Sober as a judge.
When has the acceptance been made and by whom?
In that circumstance, if the operator has accepted, it's perfectly possible that a contract has arisen, and it's perfectly possible that the operator has accepted as principle. It's also possible the operator has accepted as an undisclosed agent for the driver, and it's also possible that the operator has accepted as a disclosed agent for the driver. It all turns on the facts. The important thing here is that there's a whole lot of different ways that these contracts might come into being. What I accept is by the time the passenger gets into the car... What I accept is, by the time the passenger gets into the car, there is a contract, and you've got to look at the facts to see where the contract is. However, the parliamentary draftsman very cleverly said, "We're not going to get concerned with all of that, we're placing the liability with the operator".
But then let's just change my lord's example.
Yes.
The booking office acts as agent, or the driver.
Yeah.
The driver turns up, the putative passenger is indeed drunk, so the driver refuses to carry that passenger.
Yeah.
On this basis, there is no contract of hire, and therefore nothing for the deeming provision to bite on, is there?
Well, I don't know whether what would then be said is that it's an implied term of any contract, that the passenger will be in a fit state to be carried. You don't know, we'd have to argue it out. But the important point is.
Well, I couldn't find the passenger.
Couldn't.
Turned up at the agreed location, and there was nobody there.
Yeah.
No contract of hire.
Well, if a contract of hire was formed with the operator, then there is a contract of hire. There'd then be a question of.
Your whole point is, there doesn't need to be a contract with the operator, there can be an agency arrangement, the operator acting on behalf of the driver.
Yes.
And so my question is, if for whatever reason the driver and the passenger do not meet, and the passenger doesn't get into the car, what does section fifty-six bite on?
Well, section fifty-six would, if there was a contract at the point of booking, which can happen, it doesn't happen in my client's case, because it's effectively a booking agent, it's simply dispatched.
I mean, if there's a contract.
But if there is a contract.
If there's a contract at the moment of booking.
Yes.
Before the identity of the driver's known, that contract's going to be with the operator, isn't it? Simply as a natural contract. So you don't need the deeming provision, because the operator is a part of the contract.
If the operator is a part of the contract, then you don't need the deeming provision anyway. If the operator is not a part of the contract, the driver is a part of the contract, then the deeming provision is needed.
But only if the driver does actually pick up the passenger.
But if the driver doesn't pick up the passenger, that might be the driver's breach, in which case there might be, I mean, in theory, not that this.
The breach of what?
If there's a contract that X is going to pick me up at a particular place, at a particular time.
Oh, I see.
And I'm just not there.
No, I follow.
Then I, the passenger.
So your, one possible contractual analysis, is this right? Is that the operator, taking the booking, makes a contract there and then, but as agent for the driver.
That is one possibility.
Not principal.
Yes.
And if the driver then fails to turn up, the driver is in breach of his contract.
Yes.
And because of section fifty-six, the operator is likewise in breach of that contract.
Yes.
Which is a contract between the driver and the passenger.
Absolutely.
So are there two contracts then? Between the operator and the passenger by deeming, and the driver and the passenger by agency?
That is potentially the case, my lord, because you may have a case where squarely you find offer and acceptance, driver and passenger. The driver does something shocking. The passenger complains to the operator, the passenger's got two modes of recourse. I suppose they could take the driver to the small claims court, or, I mean, I'm not, this would never really be expected to happen. More likely, they'll complain to the operator. The important point is that when the passenger calls the operator or lodges a complaint through the operator's complaints procedures, it's not open to the operator to say, "I'm terribly sorry, actually, I'm a dispatch agent, you're going to have to direct your complaint to the driver", because the operator is deemed to contract. And in that situation, yes, in theory, there's a real contract, an actual contract, formed on classical principles, and there's a deemed contract, which is a catchall, which doesn't inquire where the contract responsibilities are. The operator's got to pick up the liability.
And the last question on this, if you're right on that, and the act permits, that kind of model is one model, that there is a direct contract via agency between the passenger and the driver, and a deemed contract between the operator and the passenger, so there are two contracts. How does section forty-six-one D or E operate? Because it seems to suggest that the driver, if he's under a contractual obligation, will be liable for a criminal offence because he's not got an operator's licence?
Lord, the.
Forty-six-one D.
The driver hasn't made the arrangements.
Well, that's what I want to find out, if that's going to be the submission, is whether you're saying he hasn't made the arrangements?
Yeah, it's never been suggested that the driver needs an operator's licence by virtue of being dispatched by the operator.
So it depends on the provision of arrangements for accepting and.
Yeah.
And that's how you distinguish, you say, Lord Leggitt's observations in Uber, because the definition of operation is different, as well as.
It's a different definition. I mean, and also in the London legislation, it is actually quite clear that the booking has got to be accepted. Two, it's got to be accepted at a particular address. Whereas in the provinces, just making provision for the invitation or acceptance of bookings. Drivers who drive around pretending to be an operator, taking calls on transfer, run the risk of being held to have made provision for the invitation or acceptance of bookings. But a driver who's dispatched by an operator, who's just dispatched by an operator, I don't think it's suggested, or has ever been suggested, that they've suddenly become an operator by virtue of the fact that they enter into a contract with the customer. I think Mr. Burriant may have some more things to say. But I think the important thing to say is that what the act fixes on is bookings.
Yeah.
And the contract may arise at that moment, it may arise with the operator, it may arise later with the driver. The beautiful thing about the act is that the Parliament was fixed on licences for vehicle operator and driver. And when it came to contract, it just waved a hand over the whole arrangement and said, "Look, there's a whole number of different possibilities here", the operator's got deemed responsibility. So that's the scheme here. So what we are asking is whether Parliament prescribed to must contract as principle, did it require the operator to do so, did it forbid the driver to do so? My client has worked this way for fifty years. Has it prescribed to, on the customer's side of the arrangement, has to be the booking party? Has it got to be the booker, has it got to be the passenger? One of the passengers? And could the passenger actually say, "Well, I want to contract with the driver"? Would that be an offence on either side? And is it mandatory, I mean, to my lord's point, if the contract is formed at the point of acceptance of the booking, when the journey, the duration of the price at that point, may not have been ascertained? Or may a booking simply reserve a licensed driver in a licensed vehicle to attend at a time and place to act on the bookers or the passengers' instructions? So we have to turn to the statutory language to deal with that. Before we do that, very briefly, can we look at the factual context against which Parliament legislated in this regard? For which, can we go to the authorities' bundle, please, at tab twenty-two? Page five-two-three. Which is, as you'll see, a report by Honourable A Maxwell Stamp on the London tax of trade presented to Parliament in nineteen seventy. And if we look at page five-seven-nine. Paragraph four-point-six-one. The report says, "The structure of the trade is very complex as regards both the types of service and the way in which the trade operates to provide the service", and then it refers to weddings, funerals, hospitals, embassies, large prestige cars, smaller popular cars, booked months in advance, some of them booked minutes ahead, et cetera. And then four-point-six-two, there were three basic methods of operation. One, a firm hires out cars which it owns. Two, a firm acts as an agency, owning no cars, employing no drivers, but operating as a clearinghouse, for passing details of hirings to owner-drivers who regularly work in association with the firm, and see a firm's subcontracts work to another firm, and then some figures are given in the succeeding paragraph. That agency is my client's model, and as you'll see, I won't take you there. Tab seventeen, page one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, paragraph eleven. It's the model for the majority.
Sorry, where are you now?
Sorry, I'm just giving you a reference, which is my client's witness statement, which is core bundle, tab seventeen, page one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, in fact, you probably should go there. Paragraph eleven. It's the model for the majority of the fifteen thousand operators across England and Wales.
Sorry, with tab seventeen, I've got an application, section ten of an application.
Yes, which was supported by a statement through. And if you go to paragraph eleven of that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
It said that the agency model is commonplace, as fifteen thousand majority use the agency model. And then just for the court's reference, this is further described in my client's statement in the supplemental bundle, at tab five.
Five?
Tab five, my lord, yes, of the supplemental bundle. I perhaps don't have time to go through the normal paragraphs, but perhaps I can ask the court to note. Paragraph ten. The traditional method of operating, which is the driver pays what's called a settle, which gives him or her the right to use the communications equipment, and beyond the roster, having paid the settle, they then keep the entirety of a fair charge for journeys undertaken by him, or should say her, the money not being accounted for or otherwise reported to Delta Taxes in any way. In other words, it belongs to the driver who provides the service. And then this is describing greater detail in paragraphs fourteen to nineteen. And at fourteen is this expression of best endeavours service. And there's description about how that happened. Sixty, no fair quotations given over the phone, fares were between passenger and driver, and so forth. Seventeen, drivers could work or not work as they want. Eighteen, it was unregulated before. And nineteen, Delta merely puts the passenger in touch with the driver, it's the driver who undertakes the journey. The fare to the journey is paid directly to the driver who keeps it. And then twenty-three gives some stats about how many times my client ordered it, it's a very hard operator in the market. So in short, the booking is accepted, the driver is dispatched, the driver contracts with the customer and keeps the proceeds. And then in paragraph twenty-six of that statement, my client explains that it's had VAT implications going back when, and HMRC are fully aware of what that business model is. And there's production of a, this is the earliest one we've been able to find. It was a VAT leaflet which explains that agency model. And that, if you want to look at it, is at tab twenty-six, page eight-nine-nine.
Twenty-six of the authorities' bundle.
Of the authorities' bundle. Tab twenty-six, page eight-nine-nine. Paragraph, sorry, page nine-oh-one. Paragraph six. And that says in brief, "Many businesses act as agents in arranging for individual self-employed drivers to make supplies of transports to customers. They undertake to relay bookings to the drivers, an agreed fee, et cetera. Drivers are entitled to the full fares paid by the customers."
This is a nineteen eighty-four VAT leaflet, is it?
Yes.
Giving guidance about what somebody in the VAT office thinks is happening and how they're approaching their VAT.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that it's a direct aid to interpretation of the nineteen seventy-six act. What I am saying is that my client's evidence says, "This is what we've always done since before the act, in common with the majority of England-Wales operators, to the knowledge of the VAT office. This is how we've always behaved before and since the passage of the act." I do not suggest, I know there's lots of authority on this, that the VAT notice from nineteen eighty-four is an interpreter of the nineteen seventy-six legislation. So that is the factual background in nineteen seventy-six. Certainly known to Maxwell Stamp, presented to Parliament, and we could say, therefore, known to Parliament. Parliament could have stopped that. But it didn't. Now let's look at what it did do in nineteen seventy-six, and then we can come to look at what it did do in twenty fifteen. So we need to go to section fifty-six-one of the act. Authorities' bundle, tab three, page one-one-four. For the purposes of this part of this act, every contract for hire of a PHV licensed under this part of the act shall be deemed to be made with the operator who accepted the booking for that vehicle, whether or not he himself provided the vehicle. And we say that section speaks for itself, but can I make four brief points about it? First of all, you'll note it applies for the purposes of this part of this act. This part is part two, which is the licensing regime for PHVs. Starting in section forty-five. So it applies not for specific sections of the PHV regime, but for the whole of it. Second, you'll note the use of the word "every". Parliament is not legislating for a subset of circumstances, but for every single circumstance. Thirdly, you'll note that it uses the word "booking" and the word "contract", they are not necessarily the same, although as we've identified, they may happen at the same moment, depending on the facts. Fourth, you'll note whether or not he provided the vehicle. And when it comes to contracting, what we say that means is this. Parliament is saying, it doesn't matter who provides the vehicle, how they provide the vehicle, the contract is deemed to be with the operator. This then, we say, is a neat device, previously called it a deft device, preserving contractual freedom in what is a complex market, as everyone understands and understood, while giving contractual recourse against the operator in the event of a failed service. And can I be absolutely clear and plain about this? I'm not trying to sneak out of.
Contractual freedom preserved, but contractual liability preserved for the operator?
While giving contractual recourse against the operator in the event of a failed service. And can I be quite clear about this?
Hold on, sorry.
So sorry, my lord.
I was giving contractual recourse, you said?
Recourse or remedy, yes, against the operator in the event of a failed service.
Presumably not just a failed service, presumably also a service that is in some way deficient.
Any, any deficiency, yes. And can I be absolutely clear with this? I don't have some hidden agenda that, oh, yes, we can sneak out of this somehow. It's a deemed contract. With all of the consequences which arise.
Well, it's a deemed identity, there is a contract.
Yes.
Between somebody.
Yes.
It may be between the operator, you said, and the hiree, it may not be.
Yes.
But whoever it's actually with.
Yes.
You say it's deemed to be with the operator, comma, or the operator as well, if it's maybe somebody else.
Yes.
Or stop.
Yes.
That's your case.
Yes. And you might consider there's logic behind that. If you call Delta Merseyside Limited to book a cab, I shouldn't say cab, a PHV, and the service fails in whatever way or is deficient in any way, obviously you'll be calling Delta to complain, and that section prevents Delta saying, "This is nothing to do with us, pursue someone else, because the contract is deemed to be with them". And simple, and it's not, as far as we're aware, presented any great difficulties over the last forty-eight years. But if it did, it could be beefed up by conditions imposed by the licensing authority. And you've seen that CFTN, in its discretion, does beef up operators' licenses accordingly. And so then, we say, that's how the legislation deals with contracting. It's an act about standards of safety enforced principally through the licenses themselves. Parliament has concluded this one provision to ensure that contractual rights can be asserted against the operator as though he is the contracting party, whether in fact he is or isn't. Now, I understand from correspondence yesterday, the Uber wish to make a point about the difficulty of policing any contract with the driver. Now, we're not aware, this has been a significant issue over the last forty-eight years, but we do say that the issue is theoretical, these are not complex marine insurance contracts. The driver contracts for a journey at a price, uh, if it's with the driver. His incentive to do it well lies in his licence, his relationship with the operator. The operator's incentive to ensure it is done well lies in his licence and his business reputation, backed up by the deemed contract. And if the customer remains dissatisfied and complains to the licensing authority, look, I booked this ride and it was a complete disaster and no one seems to care, both licenses become in jeopardy. None of that affects the principle of whether operators are obliged to take active steps to contract as principal.
If the operator told the customer, the hiree, the customer rings up and it is the judge, and the customer is therefore interested in the arrangements and says, am I contracting with you or with the driver? And the operator said, you are only contracting with the driver. Would that be wrong? And if the operator said, you are contracting with the driver, would that be misleading? Because there's always a deemed contractor to stay with the operator as well.
Well, it would be telling half the story to say, uh, you, your contract with the driver, it may well be. But if the operator says anything which suggests or might be taken to suggest that in no circs do they accept responsibility, then that's something which, of which a licensing authority might wish to take note.
Because that would be, if it's the only with the driver, that would be misleading.
It would be misleading, because the customer would think, all right, well, it's all down to the driver, I've got no, I've got no rights here. Can I just very quickly mention two other places in the Act where contracting was originally mentioned? I've got my eye on the clock and I, I feel like I should just ask you to note this. Section sixty-seven refers to contracts for Hackney carriages when they're used for private hire. They can only do it at their, at most, their normal rates. But that's where Hackney carriages can contract directly. That hasn't troubled Parliament, uh, over the last fifty years. And then in section seventy-five, very quickly, seventy-five one A, which works out, uh, how liabilities are allocated between districts. And B, uh, has now been repealed, that it was about hires for more than seven days, that referred to contracts as well. But I'm not going to take you there. So what I would say is that Parliament dealt with contracting with a light touch, but actually very decisively to ensure that operators are fixed without deemed contractual liability. And so, converting back to what I said at the beginning, there's no express requirements on operators to enter into contracts. Two, the statute deems the contractors with the operator. And three, Parliament imposes, as you can see, requirements on licensing authorities and prohibitions, but never said to authorities, you mustn't grant. Where, uh, the operator is not contracting as principal. And we're not sure that over the last half-century, it's been suggested in the provinces that that is how licensing authorities should behave. Now, that then leads me to deal with what's come to be called subcontracting. You'll recall that Maxwell Stamp set out three different ways operators operated. One of them was subcontracting to another operator. Parliament recognised this phenomenon in section fifty-six two, where it said they've got to keep a record of every booking invited or accepted by him, whether by accepting the same from the hiree or by undertaking it at the request of another operator, request of another operator. So I'd ask you to note that subcontracting is just a titular label for another operator undertaking a booking at the request of the original operator. The legislation doesn't define subcontracting, but it's simply passing the booking from one operator to the other by whatever means. This was described much more eloquently than I just had by Lord Justice Hickenbottom in the Milton Keynes case, I'm not going to ask you to turn up. For your note, bundle, uh, authorities' bundle, tab sixteen, page three hundred and ten, paragraph fourteen. Now, it was generally accepted from the outset that this subcontracting was permitted. But in the case of Ditter, tab ten, it was said because of the triple lock, the booking could only be passed to another operator licensed in the same controlled district. And for many years, it was said, well, that's just too restrictive. What, what's the actual problem about passing it to an operator in another district? Or, or passing it to London or to Scotland, provided that the receiving operator, the vehicle and driver were all licensed by the same authority. Parliament listened and passed the Deregulation Act. Please, can I take you to the explanatory note in the authorities' bundle, tab twenty-one? Page four hundred and nineteen. Paragraph three says that the Act provides for the removal or reduction of burdens on business, civil society, individuals, public sector bodies, and the taxpayer. So that was the purpose of the Act. And then if you look at page, uh, four two five, paragraph sixty, it sets out that the operator who accepts a booking is now allowed to subcontract to four types of operator. One in their own district, two in another district, C in London, D in Scotland. But A was a restatement of the existing law. It's already lawful for a private hire vehicle operator to subcontract, booking to another operator. And it was only there to make the law clearer and easier to follow. And then at sixty-three, provision is also made for an operator to pass to themselves in another district. Well, obviously, that's not subcontracting, you don't subcontract yourself in a classical contract sense. So this is just a way of saying, pass on, um, to another operator. That's how subcontracting actually works. So the purpose of these new provisions was not to mandate or prohibit a particular form of contract. It was to enable bookings to be passed out of district. And if I might also just cite as part of the factual con- context that the VAT notice current at that point is in authorities' bundle, tab twenty-seven, and it's in the same form. So it was known about, but clearly in this deregulatory act, Parliament was not setting out to close the avenue of agency down. So let's now then look back at the Act. And we recall that under section fifty-six two, the expression used is undertaking the booking at the request of the other operator. And then if we go back to fifty-five A, inserted by the deregulation act, a person licensed under section five, who has accepted a booking, may arrange for another person to provide a vehicle to carry out the booking. So the expression used there is arrangement, we've had requests so far, and arrangement. And then we get the expression subcontracting.
Is that defined anywhere?
No, that, that really, it's not, this is not the most glorious moment of, um, parliamentary legislative drafting. Because we've got request, arrangement, and undefined subcontracting.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a subcontract, that presupposes there is a head contract somewhere.
I, but I, I, I can't say it doesn't. But it's, it's quite clear that what was intended by this was not to enter into the niceties of classical contract theory. It was simply being used as a cinnamon for passing the booking across.
Yes, well, the rubric that starts subsection one doesn't speak in contractual language.
No, no. It doesn't. And, and then read together with fifty-six two, it, it clearly doesn't either. But I, I certainly would agree that, that we, we find the words contract in fifty-five. And we have to make the best we can of it.
Well, it's odd because fifty-five A one A in following talks about the subcontracted booking.
Yes, not the subcontracted contract. And that really feeds back to what I've been.
What you say, yes.
Been submitting, that this isn't an act which preoccupies itself greatly with contract. It does preoccupy itself with booking, it's booking which, uh, is, is the, is the term which is used throughout the concept of operation. With a single provision, the contract is deemed to be with the operator. Uh, and as we've identified, you'll get bookings which immediately result, ipso facto, in a contract and bookings which don't.
So what is subcontracting, just picking up my lord's point? Is the booking not a contracted hire?
That's, that's absolutely right, and you can, you can see this happening. Delta gets a call from somebody who say, I, I need a car to pick me up outside Liverpool Football Ground. They say, thanks, let's see if we can do something with that booking. They phone up somebody in the Wirral or Knowlesley or someone else and say, can you, can you do this? We haven't got the cars for it. There's no question that's a subcontracted booking, it's, it's always been understood that way. It's a booking undertaken at the request of another operator. That's just how the legislation uses the word subcontract.
On your case, at that stage, there may or may not be a contract in existence at all.
Correct.
So if it's the other operator's driver, how does a contract come into existence between that, what do you say, it all depends again. If, if the driver turns up and somebody gets into the car, the fee is paid, that is the contract.
And again, here's Parliament again, saying, we don't know how all these things happen, it is a bit messy.
So long as the individual concern can sue the first operator. And it's nothing to do with the arrangements between the company, the operator and the driver, that may or may not be employment or self-employment. Nothing to do with that, all of that is left to be regulated elsewhere.
Correct.
And the lack of interest in the actual underlying contractual arrangements is perhaps emphasised by section fifty-five, capital A, subsection two.
Yes. It's immaterial, I mean, just, you can almost see the, it really doesn't matter, it's immaterial. Whether subcontracting is permitted by the contract, et cetera.
And if we go to section fifty-six and read it into section fifty-five A, the deemed contract is with the operator who accepted the booking. And that is in section fifty-five A one, a person who accepted a booking. So if you ring up Delta, they accept the booking and transfer it to Epsilon. Your contract, your deemed contract is with Delta.
Absolutely. That's how it works. Now, Uber obviously have got to deal with fifty-six one. And what they say is that fifty-six one should be read restrictively. And, uh, not stealing Mr. Bose's thunder, but they say that it should be read restrictively as applying only to cases where there's been an ovation to another operator. And they say it can't apply to my client's case. And they say that fifty-six one is only included in the statute for the avoidance of doubt. And to that, we give a brief but respectful answer. One, the Act doesn't say anywhere that operators must contract as principal. Two, fifty-six one isn't to be read restrictively, it doesn't apply just for the purposes of section fifty-five A. It applies for the purposes of this part, i.e. for the part for the licensing regime as a whole. Three, it doesn't apply to a subset of contracts, it applies to every contract, every is the word used.
Yeah, I think you've made these points.
Made all these points, and I'm, I'd better not make them again. Can I also say that if Parliament had intended to require operators to contract as principal, it wouldn't have needed to deem they do so.
But if it had made, intended such a requirement, you would expect it to be stated expressly.
So, so lady, it was just passing lorry.
If Parliament had intended to impose such a requirement, you would expect it to be stated expressly.
In section fifty-six one, you'd only need to remove three words, deemed to be, and you'd have it. That's just not what they did. Yeah. And then Uber also make a point about safety, as to which we say, well, passengers are safe, they're, they're dealing with licensees at every single point in the, in the, um, in, in the works. And they also have a contractual recourse against the first operator. Moving swiftly on. Can I make a very brief point that according to Lord Hodg in O, the citizen ought to be able to read these provisions and make sense of them. And there, there's no citizen who could read that legislation and say, oh, I must now contract as principal. It's, it's not, I, I used to, but now I must not. Now, can I then turn briefly to Maxwell Stamp? I do not know the extent to which the report directly informed this legislation, given that it was made in respect of London six years before, that for the purposes of the Act, I'm perfectly happy to accept it either influenced the draftsman of this legislation or it influenced the draftsman of the Liverpool and Plymouth legislation which informed this legislation. It really doesn't matter, you can see the stamp of stamp in this legislation. But it doesn't matter.
But is it really, is it a legitimate aid to statutory interpretation of the nineteen seventy-six Act?
Well, we've had that debate, and I'm treading on, I'm treading carefully on territory because Uber say would be an abuse for me even to suggest that it doesn't. But you can certainly look at Maxwell Stamp for the factual context, four point six one, four point six two, whichever.
You said factual context, I mentioned you read that, as you're saying, it's evidence of what the factual arrangements were at the time, and it may or may not be evidence of that, but you say it's the factual context and that's very interesting. But is it an aid, a legitimate aid, a statute interpretation of the sort in paragraph twenty-nine thirty of O, to which you refer?
My lord, my answer to that is if you find this Act unambiguous, having regard to what was said by Lord Hodg in O, no. It can't change the meaning of unambiguous language.
Right, but if it's ambiguous, is this a legitimate aid to resolve in that ambiguity? The same question, really.
I think the answer is yes, but can I consult my learner, Julia?
Well, we have to know the basis upon which it's a legitimate aid, then.
Yes. Can I have a, can I have a short thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Do me a note. Will you raise a?
Do it later, it's not important.
Thank you. What we say, and I'm not sidestepping your question, I will come to it, but it can't change the meaning of the word every in section fifty, nothing could change the meaning of the word every. And it can't impose an obligation on licensing authorities to start refusing licences to operators whose businesses based on the agency model when the Act just doesn't make that provision. Now, can I just take you very quickly to what Stamp actually did? Because if you do want to look at it, you can actually see what was recommended and how the draftsman dealt with it. So paragraph six oh, page six oh five, I do have my eye on the clock. Page six oh five, paragraph six point twenty-one. Page six oh five, paragraph six point twenty-one. It suggested at the end that the passenger would have a right of action against the hiring firm, as well as the driver, the injury or loss arising from failure to observe the regulations. At six point twenty-three, it was suggested that it'll only be possible to engage a hire car by making a contract for hire with the operator, on which basis it was suggested that applying for hire legislation was abolished. At nine point six.
So this is, six point twenty-three says it will not be lawful for the driver to accept a booking direct to the passenger.
I agree.
But only through the medium of a registered office.
Yes, where the taxidermist continued to be entitled to deal direct with the public. I'm just showing you this so you can see that the draftsman largely accepted Stamp but didn't fully accept it. At nine point six, page six thirty, three lines down, in the private hire business, the operator and not the driver is the person with whom the hireer makes his contract. So the operator should have responsibility, but seems that the draftsman or that forgot what had been said about agency in four-point-six-one and four-point-six-two. At nine point nine, second half, scheme of control should contain a provision where the operator himself, where the operator himself undertakes to arrange for a vehicle to be provided, whether by himself or by another operator, the hire's contract is deemed to be with the original operator. It's not quite clear what would happen where the operator doesn't himself undertake to arrange for a vehicle to be provided. And then getting to the end, page six-three-four. Sorry, we should just look at six-three-three. Nine point twenty-eight, anyone who invites and accepts bookings should be licensed. Parliament nearly accepted but didn't quite, it was made provision four. Nine point twenty-nine, operators should be required to furnish particulars, if carried forward. Nine point thirty-one, fitness. And where the authority is satisfied, it must grant the licence. Which was carried forward. And then nine point thirty-two, C, the hire's contract should be deemed to be made with the operator who undertakes to arrange for a vehicle to be provided, whether or not he himself provides the vehicle and governed by his normal conditions of business. Well, conditions of business didn't make the final cut. And
Well, neither did this, because this is the conditions to be attached. This isn't defining anything more than that.
Absolutely. And then nine point three-two, I and J, reference to booking agencies. And then very finally, six-five-eight. Top of six-five-eight, the scheme of control should include a provision where the operator himself undertakes to arrange for the vehicle to be provided, whether by himself or by another operator, the hire's contract is deemed to be with the original operator and the fare to be charged on his normal basis. But not clear what happens when the operator doesn't so undertake. So that's how Maxwell Stamp dealt with it, but Parliament followed the general model. But in the event, Parliament just cut through all the complexity of contracting, which Stamp had identified. Subcontracting, booking agencies, terms, normal terms of business, whose normal terms of business? What do you do when the operator himself doesn't provide the vehicle? Just cut through it. And said in every case, the contract is deemed to be with the operator. And you could almost hear the draftsman saying, well, let's just keep this simple, shall we?
Well, not in every case their contract shall be deemed. You see, in every case, a contract shall be deemed.
Well, there is a contract because there's a hire. And that's, it's inherent in the notion of private hire, there's hire. And if you hire something, you're in a contract. And we say it's clear, it's simple, it's unambiguous, produces no absurdity. And following Lord Hodg, in the case of O, its meaning is not displaced by the recommendations in the Stamp report. May I then spend five minutes on the nineteen ninety-eight Act and five minutes on the declaration? To cut through it, can I take to my skeleton, which is in the core bundle, tab seven? Paragraphs thirty-six to thirty-eight. And can I just make the obvious point that it's an act which is made in respect of a different region twenty-two years later and cannot by itself alter the meaning of the seventy-six Act? But in any case, the language used is different. And we've set out eight differences in paragraph thirty-seven, which are there to be read. But in short, London legislation makes acceptance of the booking a licensable activity. It states that it's the operator who provides the vehicle and refers to the contract of hire between the hireer and the operator. But the key difference is that the nineteen ninety-eight Act contains no deeming provision. In the United Trade Action Group case, the UTAG case, the court held that on construction of the nineteen ninety-eight Act, the statute required a contract of hire between the operator and the hireer. And Uber placed significant reliance on that, suggesting that a parity of reasoning applies. But actually, it's instructive to look at what the court actually said about the nineteen seventy-six Act, which with respect, Uber has apparently overlooked. You'll find in the UTAG case, tab eighteen, the authorities' bundle. Your justice, male, as you say. And if I can just take you directly to paragraph thirty-one of the judgment. And Lord Justice Males just explained why the interpretation assists with safety. And then in paragraph thirty-one, says section fifty-six of the seventy-six Act, set out above, supports this view. Provides every contract, hire should be deemed, et cetera. That demonstrates a clear parliamentary intention that the operator should undertake contractual responsibility. The language of the nineteen ninety-eight Act is different. There's no reason for any different parliamentary intention in relation to private hire vehicle services in London. And then thirty-three, having looked at the case of Kingston and Wilson, he says, the case was not about whether there was a contract between operator and passenger. That issue could not have arisen in view of the terms of section fifty-six of the nineteen seventy-six Act, which made it clear that there was due to the deeming provisions. So the reconciliation of that case and this case is that that case, the court on construction of that language and an obligation to contract, but when dealing with the nineteen seventy-six Act, the court says, well, it's due to the deeming provisions. And that's really all I needs to say about the London legislation. It's the deeming provision which achieves the intention of Parliament that contractual responsibility should fall upon the operator. You don't need to invent a positive obligation. And then finally, the declaration. The order appealed is at tab eleven, page eighty-three. Which is in order to operate lawfully under the seventy-six Act, a licensed operator who accepts a booking from a passenger is required to enter as principal into a contractual obligation with the passenger to provide the journey which is the subject of the booking. And our main point, obviously, is that behaviour is said to be unlawful. You ought to be able to point to the law making it so. And then there were subsidiary points about passenger and journey. Namely, it might not be the passenger who books. And what they book might not be a journey. Now, just to go back, because I'm aware of Lord Justice Lewis's comments earlier about the permission stage. Tab five, page thirty-one. Lord Justice Phillips says, section fifty-six of the seventy-six Act expressly deems that the operator who accepts a PHB booking is the contracting party, whether for the avoidance of doubt or otherwise, et cetera. That plainly disposes the intervenor's arguments on the substance. In other words, he was saying, of course, there's a contract, it's a deemed contract. Section fifty-six expressly deems it. However, he says, it appears arguable that the wording in the declaration made by the judge is inappropriate in the above context. There may be little or no scope for a requirement that an operator enter a contractual obligation because it's deemed to do so, I have heard you of section fifty-six. As the wording in the declaration may wrongly indicate, the criminal liability arises in certain situations should be considered by the court. So what Lord Justice Phillips was saying, look, there is a deeming. But is there a requirement that the operator has to enter into a contractual obligation? That gave rise to quite a little deal of correspondence.
Just looking at the ground of permission, there's an odd world in which we could do what you're saying and say there is a deemed contract. That still doesn't solve all the underlying problems that you've referred to about that and so on. Because the question is a slightly different one. There is a contract, and it is only one contract, and it is with the operator, not a contract with the driver and also the operator. And that's what you want to argue, is the structure of the Act. You don't seem to have permission for that under the decision. Because if I look at your ground one.
Yeah.
That's the, your ground one, yes, that's the one that gives you permission to appeal against the structure of the Act. And it's only ground two, the wording is inappropriate.
Well, it was certainly, it certainly gave rise to a degree of consternation, how you should interpret this. And I think that Lord Justice Phillips, with the greatest respect to Lord Justice Phillips, he hasn't heard argument on the topic, rather took our ground one as meaning we're not subject to any kind of contractual liability. Whereas if that's what was intended by ground one, how ground one was read, it wasn't what we intended. But that then gave rise to correspondence.
Well, we've got Visu's ground to appeal, which does seem to raise the construction of the Act, and Lord Justice Phillips seems to have allowed that to go ahead in part, but it's not entirely clear which part.
Yes, and again, when that permission decision was issued, Uber's solicitors wrote to us to say, right, well, we're obviously not going to be arguing about requirement then, are we? And we corresponded, and capital O for Visu corresponded. And their two letters are in, not in the core bundle, I think, I think they're in the supplementary bundle. Tab eighteen and tab one-two, and tab twenty-one. This is right. So tab eighteen, they, their proposition was that they were entitled to argue the following. One, that the declaration is inappropriate, it imposes a requirement. Two, insofar as declared the operator to be acting unlawfully, if they don't enter as a principal, the wording may wrongly indicate criminal liability arises. And the permission order doesn't limit the appellant's mission to challenge declarations to the use of the words passenger and journey. And then in twenty-one, tab twenty-one, they make clear that the deeming applies to them. And then in paragraph four, they challenge whether the operator is required to take positive action. And then reference back to criminal liability. And then bookings and journey. And then Lord Justice Phillips looks at that and says, this is core bundle, page thirty-three, that he agrees with Visu's formulation. This is tab six, page thirty-three. And so hence, we've come to the court to suggest that the operator is not required to enter into a contract that is deemed to be the contracting party. And however the court phrases its position, obviously we're indifferent to that. The key point for us is that the operator is not required.
Yeah.
So I think probably, I've said all the, almost all I need to say about the prior proceedings. Uber's skeleton, which you'll find in core bundle, tab nine. If you can read that skeleton. Page eighty. Paragraph eighty-five. They've reformulated this declaration and omitted not just passenger and journey, but they've omitted the word lawfully. It's just now required. But we'd respectfully submit that that demonstrates a lack of conviction in their own case. If it's not lawfully required, then what sort of requirement is it? Is it a hope? Is it less than a law? What is it? And we say that just demonstrates they can't point to the requirement in the statute which imposes this lawful obligation on operators and which undoes longstanding industry practice. So far as the person who made the booking is concerned, the contract might not be with that person. Because the hotel who calls it is, can we have a cab please for Mr. Colvin?
Yeah.
They might make the booking, but they might not make the booking.
I'm a bit puzzled by your submission on the word lawfully. I mean, if the Act requires it, it's lawful.
Then it's lawful.
Because the Act requires it.
I agree.
If, on the other hand, it doesn't require it.
Yes.
Then it doesn't matter.
There's only two possibilities. It's binary. It's a requirement and it's a lawful requirement. But we say it's a lawful requirement.
And lawful is just superfluous in the declaration. Either way, either the Act requires it or it doesn't.
Well, I, lord, I do agree with you. If there's a requirement specified in the statute, then it's a lawful requirement. So this may be verbiage, but what was interesting was that Lord Justice Phillips said there may not be room for the word requirement because there's a deeming.
Exactly.
I completely agree with you about lawful requirements. They are synonymous things, or they're flip sides of the same coin. We're agreeing. I'm simply pointing out that as a result of the Lord Justice Phillips formulation, which I'm puzzled about requirement, therefore permission, the word lawfully has disappeared. But I don't want to take silly points, particularly with an eye on the clock. So far as the person making that booking, the contract might not be with that person. The hotel doesn't want to accept contractual responsibility on the passenger side or the restaurant or the nightclub or somebody else. But what that underlines is just these arrangements arise in any number of different ways. What about the local education authority booking for?
Well, it's clear that everyone accepts that these are the word passenger. They were thinking that the person who's taking the journey made the call. But it could be the friend of the elderly neighbour, it could be a relative, it could be the hotel receptionist. And I think everyone agrees now passenger isn't the right word. It's the person who made the booking.
And what it underlines is why section fifty-six is such a clever provision, because it sidesteps all that. And equally, and it's a very short point, it might not be a journey. During Wimbledon fortnight, we can say there are cars sitting there. There are different models. There are different models. And then lastly, how is this to be enforced? And it suggested that it's to be enforced under the fitness and propriety jurisdiction of the licensing authority. Well, you've seen where Parliament mandates what licensing authority should do, what it's entitled to decide upon, and what it isn't. If it was that important for licensing authorities to look at that, then you'd find it on the face of the act. In fact, they are obliged to grant, when somebody is fit and proper, to do what the act says they do as licensable, which is make provision for the invitation and acceptance of bookings. And so we'd resist the idea that the court should step in and direct licensing authorities to do it.
So you say fitness and propriety and not concepts that include this kind of requirement.
When you look at the act and what the act's about, it isn't. And I don't mean to finish with a jury point, it just happens to be the last point, which is that this is a short point, and you're being asked to construe a few words in a statute. And if it takes 25 pages to explain it, including Maxwell Stamp for London six years before, and London legislation after, 22 years after, then it probably isn't there. And we say it isn't there. And on those grounds, we respectfully ask you to allow this of you.
Right.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Gurry.
Well, Mr. Colvin has, as I predicted he would, covered, I think comprehensively, everything that otherwise I would have said if I were on my own. And I'm not going to start it all over again. And I will live in myself, unless you wish me to say more, just at two discreet developments of the points here today.
Yep.
The first is this, and it's been covered already, but I would express it slightly differently. The booking of a private hire vehicle is not the same as the contract of hire of that vehicle. The two can occur at the same time, but they needn't do so. They're two different concepts, and they're expressed in different language in Section 56.1 of the 76 Act. The example we gave in our skeleton was that I can ring an operator and say, can you get a car to meet me at the station at five o'clock? If the car is there at five o'clock, the booking I have made has been fulfilled. I may then contract with the driver to take me to my home, or to take somebody I've met on the train to their home first, and there will be a contract of hire. What Section 56.1 does very usefully is say that no matter that my regulatory obligations as an operator are simply concerned with making provision for the invitation and acceptance of bookings, nonetheless, every contract of hire that arises from any arrangement I have made is deemed to be made with me.
Yeah.
And an operator can't escape and say, well, it's nothing to do with me. I only just arranged for the car to be there, he's fixed with liability. And that is, Mr. Colvin has emphasized, every contract of hire.
May I just ask one question? We were sent a part of the bundle below yesterday, the VIZU terms with your client. And what you've just said, the operator cannot avoid the contract because of the deeming provision, seems to be flatly contradictory with what's in paragraph seven of 339, where you say basically nothing to do with us, can I paraphrase you?
Yes.
And that can't be right then, can it, paragraph seven?
Well, my lord, yes, virtually, many operators, I won't exaggerate, many operators try in their terms and conditions to avoid that liability. They cannot. The deeming provision overrides anything they say in their terms and conditions.
And would you agree with your colleague that that is something that's relevant to fitness and propriety? Because if you're telling people nothing to do with us, the contract is with the driver, that that does go to fitness and propriety? Or would you rather not answer that, because?
It's capable, depending on the circumstances. If somebody doesn't fully understand what the position is, what the deeming position is, it would not go to fitness and propriety. If they did fully understand what the deeming provision is and tried to get round it by hoodwinking their customers, that would go. But everything would depend on the circumstances.
Right.
The other matter simply relates to the deregulation act and Section 55A. And Mr. Colvin did go into this, it's headed subcontracting by operators. I agree with him that subcontracting has been a convenient label over the years. It has been a shorthand for arranging somebody else to provide the vehicle. But I would submit it's unlikely to have been Parliament's intention to saddle what is a relatively straightforward arrangement. Can you provide the vehicle for me? Yes, I can, to saddle that with the laws, sometimes complicated laws of contract, such as novation and assignment, as Uber would have it. Now, I know the court is well aware of Mr. Justice Buxton's, Lord Justice Buxton, as he became in Kingston and Hull, saying he's careful to astu bringing in the laws of contracts to these matters where there are simple arrangements. And clearly, that, I don't know whether the abstract now is astument, but clearly that would apply in this case. Mr. Colvin referred to but didn't take into what Lord Justice Hickenbottom said. And may I, because I have a few minutes of my own, just ask if you look at it? Or I can read it out, it's at tab 16 of the first operator's bundle. And it is at page 310, paragraph 14. And it is what you points out, that although the provisions, Section 55A and B, use the term subcontracting and subcontracted booking, for these provisions to be effective in respect of a particular booking, no legal contract is required between the first and second operator. The first operator merely has to arrange for the second operator to provide a vehicle to carry out the booking. The effect of such an arrangement is sometimes said to transfer booking to the second operator. And from that, I derive a simple proposition that I suggest Uber read far too much into the use of the word contract and subcontract in the Section 55A and B. That, the term subcontracted or contract is a convenient label, is perhaps illustrated by Section 55A subsection three, which allows an operator licensed in area A and a second operator licensed in area B to be one and the same person. Axiomatically, a person cannot contract with himself. And that rather illustrates that although the section uses the word subcontract, it is using it as a label, rather than incorporating the law of contract. It's an inelegant way to finish, my lord. And my clients who have instructed me may be alarmed that I'm saying so loudly, but I hope that they understand I'm incorporating everything that Mr. Colvin said.
Yes, of course.
Is there anything that I can say further to assist?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gurry. Yes, Mr. Bux.
May I arrange my papers before I invoke?
Yes.
I will also take the opportunity to clear the decks.
Fight in the block. Andrew, do you need more room?
Hmm?
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
My lord, I propose to deal my submissions in six parts. The first is thing about context. The second is to deal head-on with the consequences of the appellant's submissions on 56.1, the practical effects of how it operates, if they are right. Thirdly, with the 1976 Act. First, as enacted, then by reference to the Maxwell Stamp report, and then Sections 55A and B, added by the deregulation act 2015. Just pausing there, we're perfectly aware of the purpose of the deregulation act. Its significance, we say, lies in the fact that Section 55A.1 was a restatement of the law, as was, insofar as referred to that subsection, subsection two. The fourth area will be to look at the 1998 Act and the decision of the divisional court in Uber London Limited. We say that it is a direct comparator for which the court can gain assistance, except, of course, it is a different act, it is 22 years later, and the court is in any event not bound by that. But nonetheless, it is a useful comparator. And although there is no formal deeming provision, Section 55, in effect, performs the same function as Section 56.1 on our analysis. The fifth point will be to make our discreet submissions on the substantive question before the court. We summarize those in paragraph 50 of our skeleton, and in essence, they are as follows. That the 1976 Act is predicated on the basis that a contract of hire will be entered into following the acceptance of a booking. Further, it is contemplated that that will be a contract with the operator and no one else. Further and thirdly, the 1976 Act requires the operator to enter into a contract of that nature for similar reasons as found favour with the divisional court in Uber London Limited. And then fourth and finally, that the deeming provision in Sections 56.1 does not operate widely, but indeed does serve only to apply in cases where operator one has accepted a booking, but does not then provide the PHV to perform that booking, a different operator does. And in those circumstances, in effect, the first operator can't pass on their contractual liability towards the hireer. In cases, of course, where the hireer may not know anything about this arrangement. And my lord, the final part of the submission, perhaps I can deal with now, that's the wording of the declaration. What we have sought to do in our paragraph 80 is simply to deal with the point about passenger and journey. We have no difficulty with other points. We hadn't intended to make any other change from that, as my lord sees from our skeleton argument of paragraphs 65 to 67. We say in terms that there is a legal requirement, contract, see the divisional court. So my lord, in terms of context, we accept that the effect of the judgment below is that all operators are required to adopt what's been called a merchant model. And for some, that therefore would require a change away from an agency model. And some have not in fact done so, despite Lord Justice Phillips refusing the stay to VIZU and Delta not having sought one. They continue to operate a purported agency model. And we accept that this may require some operators to change a model of operation that was in place when the act was enacted and adopted by authorities, and which they've operated for decades since. And we accept, of course, that these changes may be structural, and they could have financial and other fiscal consequences in the nature of VAT and the like. But again, they would also lead to a level playing field between all operators. Much play is made in the evidence and in the court below as to the consequences to operators, if that is right. And that this point hasn't been taken for many, many years, and what are you doing being here, Uber? But my lord, of course, the same question, considering this litigation, was considered against a similar background, with similar consequences, in Uber London Limited. There, the divisional court was asked to consider the interpretation of a statute passed some 23 years previously, when before it had been passed, London minicab firms had enjoyed some 22 years more of a wholly unregulated industry than had those in the provinces. And so the question came before the divisional court in circumstances where, enacting the 1998 Act, Parliament is to be taken to have understood the existing industry it was seeking to regulate for the first time, and the model's then existence. And it also came before the court in circumstances where the regulator, Transport for London, had never considered this was how the act operated. The court had before it evidence from Miss Helen Chapman, who was TFL's senior officer, that stated they didn't really feel that was part of their function. And indeed, it came before the court where many operators continued to operate what was then known as the agency model. Because, you know, in London, one has, as one does in the provinces, traditional minicab offices, walk-ins, telephones. In fact, I think there were some 1,900 operators in 2021. It's paragraph nine of the judgment of the divisional court. So the issue when it arose, and so the issue when it arose did embrace some of the circumstances to this one. And also, when it arose, it was in a quite different context. It wasn't in the context of licensing law and what is required. But as my lord knows, it arose in the context of the issue of workers in the ASLAM litigation. And then not even in the lower courts, but only by the Supreme Court, where, as my lord knows, there were over to comments by all members of the court. And so it was only in that context, in that court, years later, the spotlight was shone on this issue. And therefore, it's no great surprise that the spotlight has not been shone on the 1976 Act until either. And so the divisional court was fully aware of what was the position for 1998, the agency model. It was fully aware that in answering the question in the affirmative and concluding there was a requirement for contract, that would be a change for a major part of the existing industry. And it didn't entirely properly regard the misunderstanding of the regulator and those operating in this fields as material to the question, which was one of pure statutory interpretation. And that's exactly the same here. If the judge is right, the consequences that flow do so, because that is presumably Parliament's intention, as at 1976. And the fact that this declaration is being sought in 2024 and not in 1978, matters not one jot. And the consequences in the provinces have already been felt in London. Again, some concern expressed in the court below in the evidence about effect on operators, affordability, people going out of business. But none of those structural matters had on the evidence before the court below come to pass. So for its part, Transport for London issued guidance to assist all operators, large and small, as to written and or oral contracts, on what they needed to do in respect of the requirement to contract. Can I take you very briefly to that, please? It's at supplemental bundle tab 34, page 322. And it starts the term page 322. And it was issued following the decision issued in April 2022. And then on page 323, who does the obligation apply to? It applies to all operators. And then what does it mean? And it sets out briefly what operators must understand. And then over on page 324, it subdivides its consideration into both operators with written contracts and those who do not have a written contract. 324 is written contracts. And one sees in the first paragraph, for operators that have written contracts, there are no fixed laws concerning what those contracts should say and ought to be complied, but they must be consistent with the 1998 Act and the 2000 regulations, and in particular, the obligation to provide the journey that is the subject of the booking. And the point about being consistent with the act, that was to meet a point made by Lord Justice Miles in the Uber London case, which we'll come to. And so one sees under D makes it clear that only the operator can cancel a booking with a passenger. And E makes it clear that liability in relation to transportation services belongs to the operator. And then it sets out a number of matters which it would consider would not be compliant. And then over the page, in relation to operators without written contracts, it would expect that operators' processes and procedures, again, would be consistent with the act. And sets out some matters there, including D, where applicable, payment of VAT on fares. And so there's no difficulty at all in seeking for licensing authorities to seek to enforce such requirement if one exists. And we do say that if an operator fails to comply with those requirements, it would be acting in an unfit manner and could face the revocation or suspension of its licence. And as to the suggestion made in the court below again, that this might lead to And as to the suggestion made again in the court below again, that this might lead to operators going out of business, the evidence, as the judge held to paragraph eighty four, there was no dramatic falloff in numbers of operators as a result of the Divisional Court's ruling. Well, that's simply some background context. Can I go then to deal with the consequences of the appellant's argument on section fifty six one? And before getting into those, and then can I just make this point, Mr. Colvin, both in his skeleton argument and today, in effect, says, well, you know, the fact that we have to take twenty five pages shows we can't be right and all of that.
It's irrelevant, actually. All of this is irrelevant, the context, what has happened, it really is down to the Act.
My lord, that's right. But the point I'm making is that the position taken by the appellant's here, i.e. that the fact of section fifty six one gives the hire up contractual recourse against the operator was not the case they advanced below. It is an entirely new case advised, advanced on this appeal. If I can just give the court the references in the skeleton argument, below it was Delta supplemental bundle, page eighty, paragraph twenty nine.
So what's the point you're making, that they shouldn't be allowed to run the argument?
No, my lord, absolutely not. Of course they can run the argument.
They've been inconsistent and therefore it's a bad argument. I mean, what's the point?
The point, running through in the front, Mr. Colvin's skeleton argument is to sort of say to us, well, it's so simple, the fact that we have to take so difficult i- is wrong, but, you know, this wasn't their case.
Right. All right. So you're going to show us what? Skeleton below?
My lord, I'll just give you the references. I don't want to take up any, any, any time on this as necessary. Delta's skeleton argument is supplemental bundle, page eighty, paragraph twenty nine, and Vizu's is page ninety five, paragraph thirty eight. And in effect, their case was that section fifty six one deemed the operator to be a party to the contract for certain stated regulatory purposes.
By which paragraph?
It's in Delta's, it's paragraph twenty nine on page eighty.
Twenty nine?
Yeah. And Vizu's, my lord, is page ninety five, paragraph thirty eight.
If they change that now.
They have, yes.
And what we're arguing about now is can there be a, and they agreed for Vizu's accepted, that on one reading, his turn to condition saying, with the driver not any worse is wrong, we've now moved to new words.
Yeah, we have, we have.
There is always going to be contract between the operator and the person who made the booking. The question is whether that is the only contract or whether they have to contract as principle, because for some reason the word principle seems important.
My lord, yes.
Or put differently, can there be two contracts whereby they, there is a contract for hire, which is deemed always to be with the operator, but there could still be a contract with the driver, which wouldn't involve liability under section forty six, because there's a narrower definition of operator, and therefore there's a possibility of a dual arrangement, which we are told, but I mean, I knew nothing about whether it's true or not, could be relevant for employment law and vat purposes. And that's where we're at.
Yeah, my lord, absolutely. But turning to their case and just giving our submissions on consequence, and then I'm doing this out of turn, I'll do it much later, but clearly I'll deal with this now. The submission by the appellant's is in terms that section fifty six one gives contractual recourse for failed service or when things go wrong against the operator. And they say this is so by deeming them to be a party to the contract of hire, which is actually entered into between the driver and the hireer.
Which may be in certain circumstances, yeah.
That's right. And my lord has already looked at Vizu's terms, I don't take you to them again, but we will say firstly that this interpretation is inconsistent with the mischief of the section Maxwell Stamp, but I'll come to that later. Secondly, we say that on their interpretation, it operates only in cases where the operator does not in fact contract as principal with the hireer, because each of them accept that it is quite possible for an operator to contract as principal, and indeed, both of them do do that in certain circumstances. Again, just for the court's note, it's the witness statement of Mr. McLaughlin for Delta at page thirty five of the supplemental bundle, paragraph twenty one, and for Vizu, the statement of Miss Nia Cooper, page forty seven of the supplemental bundle, paragraph thirteen point one. For Vizu, it's when they had their corporate account customers, they contracted as principal, they pay VAT and the like. So the effect of their submission, the second point, is that on their operate, on their interpretation, it operates only in a subset of cases, because clearly it wouldn't operate where the contract is in fact with the operator. And that is not made clear by section fifty six one, which we would say it would have done had it been intended to operate in the way that they suggest. Third point is that we say the language of section fifty six one does not support the contention they put, because that provides every contract for the hire of a PHV shall be deemed to be made with the operator who accepted the booking. It is expressed in the singular, and it's not expressed as the appellant's would have it read, in addition to the driver, who is or may be a party to the contract of hire. The fourth point is as to consequence, and the appellant's arguments give rise to considerable problems as to when the contract of hire arises, to which contract the operator is then deemed to be a party, whereas our interpretation is, following acceptance of booking, a contract is contemplated to arise with the operator, is required to arise, and will ordinarily do so very shortly thereafter, after the booking has been accepted. So one then has protection for the hire, hire up for that time onwards. But the position for the appellant's, and indeed for any licensed operator operating a purported agency model, the position is far more uncertain, because if the operator is acting as either a disclosed or an undisclosed agent for the driver, it is self-evident that no contract for hire can arise until that driver has been identified by the operator and indicates a willingness to accept the booking. Because, of course, until that happens, there is no principle. One can't be an agent for, you know, potentially three thousand different drivers who are in our stable. And it is because of that that one sees in Vizu's conditions, which my lord has noted, they say the contract arises when the driver turns up at the hireer's property. That is when they say it arises. Now, it could be slightly earlier, so it could be when the operator gets a booking and said, I want to be picked up next Tuesday at the pub, and on the Monday night phones someone and says, will you do this job? If they're then identified, depending on the terms, a contract may arise earlier than turning up. But it's going to be either identification of driver or turning up at the property. So that means that in every case, there will be a period of time between the acceptance of the booking by the operator and the coming into existence of the contract of hire, which contract the operator is then deemed to be a party. Now, that may be short, but it may not be.
There'll be a period between the booking and the coming into hire when there's no contract, you say, just misheard you. There'll be a period of time between booking and the coming into.
A contract of hire, yes. Now, this can be a short period of time, so you may phone up, say, I'd like a cab, and the operator checks is available, X is available, and they're there within two minutes. That's fine. But PHVs are booked days or weeks in advance to go to the airport, business meetings and the like. And the difficulty in the appellant's case is what is the status of the booking between acceptance by the operator and the driver being identified or turning up? What is the contractual protection enjoyed by the person who made the booking and is relying on a PHV coming and is expecting it to come? And in particular, what if the driver doesn't turn up? I.e., in colloquial terms, straightforward breach of contract, what you wanted hasn't happened. On the appellant's argument, it has to be there is no contract for hire, because that contract for hire would only arise when the driver arrived. Or similarly, what happens if the operator cannot identify a driver but doesn't communicate that? Again, no contract arises. And so it creates huge uncertainty and leaves this period, this uncertain period, where there is simply no contract of hire on their case and no protection. And as Lord Justice Mel said in the ULL case, the consequences of a driver failing to turn up may be serious. You may need a PHV later night, maybe a lone woman, maybe a vulnerable hireer, you may miss a flight. But on their analysis, tough. None of these provisions work. There's no contract of hire in fact, and so the deemed provision, fifty six one, is a dead letter. And one can see these facts operating even on the fact of Skyline, which is in the bundle, but my friend at Colvin referred to it. That's the one where now two operators are using bookings. And in Skyline, one had a case of the hireer phoning up, or rather contacting operator one to book a minicab at six fifty the following morning. The operator didn't allocate any jobs until five to ten minutes before the time, that was their operating model. They hadn't allocated anyone, and so at six fifty three the following morning, the hire up contacted them, saying, what's going on? And then thereafter, they allocated to the second operator, and a driver turned up at seven seventeen. Now, on that analysis, there was no contract of hire until the driver for the second operator was either identified or turned up, and no protection in the meantime. And we say it is a very odd thing for Parliament to have legislated in this way to provide what is, we would say, wholly illusory protection, whereas our submission doesn't do any of that, we have certainty.
But this, as if what you're saying is, is implicit in the Act in some way, you'll show us how, that a contract must arise when a booking is accepted.
My lord, yes, and that's, and that's part of our submission, that's right, yes. So that's the difficulty in consequence, and then the further related one is how is it to operate in practice? Because again, this Act is intentionally operated up and down the land every day in everyday activities. But what are the operator's obligations under this, under the contract to which they are deemed to be a party by section fifty six one? Let's assume first there is a written contract for hire between the driver and the hireer. So one assumes that. Now, what are the operator's rights and obligations under that contract to which it is not a party and indeed the terms of which it may have no notice of whatsoever? See the case, for example, where an operator can't itself fulfil the booking, goes to a second operator, operator's driver turns up, operator one may have no idea what those terms and conditions are. How does one, please, do you simply look at the written terms and wherever it says driver, write in operator and or operator? Well, that can't work, because there may be certain obligations that are clearly only relevant to the operator. And how is the hireer meant to know that this contract is in fact made the operator and the terms of it, when all the law does in the appellant's case is deem them to be a party to the contract of hire, and Vizu's examples are a case in point? So it gives rise to a huge number of difficulties. What are operator's rights and obligations where there is a contract? How does one determine them? And the problem's become even greater, where there is no written contract between the hireer and the driver, which will be in the majority of cases, because one sees that although Vizu have very long and detailed terms and conditions, that's not a contract for hire, that's a contract for booking services, assuming they have a long contract with their, with their driver. So in a case where there is no written contract, then any licensing authority or consumer who's been let down has to try and work out what the terms of that contract actually are, and then having done that, go on to the second path analysis, what are the operator's obligations given that they are a party to this contract? And we do say it is, it is hopelessly uncertain, both for consequence and for regulation, and it is not something that Parliament intended when passing this legislation. My lord, is that appropriate moment?
Right. All right. Thank you very much. Two o'clock.